Do I have a motion to reconvene in open session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The board is now in open session. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution certifying the closed session?
Now therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the first student matter?
In case numbers 2024-25/16, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the remaining student matters?
In case numbers 2024-25/29RE, 2024-25/30RE, 2024-25/31RE, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April 8, 2025, School Board Business Meeting to order. Before we begin the meeting this evening, I would like to thank everyone for attending the April 8 School Board Business Meeting and remind the audience that comments to this board may only be made at the podium during the public comment period. Comments from the audience are prohibited and are in violation of Section 18.2-415 of the Code of Virginia, Disorderly Conduct in Public Places, and School Board Policy 6141. I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding so that we can conduct the business meeting in an orderly fashion. We will now have invocation by Mrs. Chatters, followed by the flag salute led by Mr. Pronto.
Before tonight's invocation, I would like to recognize with a moment of silence the passing of Alvin Thatch, a sixth grader from Falling Creek Middle School who recently passed away. In keeping with my invocation tradition, I have a poem. It's called "Rise." I have known the weight of night, fallen deep, outpaced the light. Silence pressed against my chest, hope a whisper, a whisper, pain a guest. But even in the blackest shade, a single spark refused to fade. A stubborn flame, a quiet cry, I'm not done, I will still try. Through shattered ground I made my way, one breath, one step, one thread of day. Bruised but burning, scarred yet whole, each wound a map etched on my soul. I rose not clean, but bold and true, with every loath, lost something I knew. You don't need wings to touch the skies, just grit and heart and the will to rise.
Could you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's consent agenda includes: Agenda adoption, approval of the minutes from our March 11, 2025 work session, and our March 11, 2025 business meeting; memo number 041-25, recommended personnel actions; memo number 042-25, FY 2024, acceptance of new grants; memo number 043-25, acceptance of donation; memo number 044-25, acceptance of donation; memo number 045-25, career and technical education local plan approval; memo number 046-25, nomination for V S B A Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award; memo number 047-25, approval of student fee schedule for 2025-26 school year and 2025 summer fees; memo number 048-25, adoption of 2025-26 C C P S school calendar changes; and memo number 057-25, appointment of members to school board advisory committees. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no additions or corrections to the consent agenda.
Are there any requests from a school board member to separate an item from the consent agenda for discussion and individual action? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. Mr. Smith, would you please announce our new administrators?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If I could ask Jasmine Carpenter, Daniel Gardner, and Benjamin Schindler to come forward Board members, with your action this evening, you've approved three new administrators. Jasmine Carpenter was approved as the Director of Curriculum Development and Support, Elementary, effective May 27, 2025. Her most recent education is post master's certificate in Administration and Educational Leadership from George Washington University. She's currently serving as a principal in Prince William County Public Schools. Daniel Gardner was approved as principal for Grange Hall Elementary, effective July 1, 2025. He most recently completed his Doctor of Education, Educational Leadership, and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. He's currently serving as Assistant Principal, Alberta Smith Elementary School. And Benjamin Schindler was approved as the principal, Monakin High School, effective July 1, 2025. Most recently, he completed his Doctor of Education, Educational Policy Planning and Leadership from the College of William &amp; Mary, sorry, William &amp; Mary University, January 2025, currently serving as Associate Principal at Metoka High School. Please join in congratulating these administrators. Madam Chair and Board members, you have next up on your agenda, your recognitions. We're going to pause a little bit for those. We know there's an accident on 288, just holding some folks up. So continue with your agenda, and once we have a mass of folks, we'll kind of bring that back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Per point of clarification, do we need to amend the agenda window? Since we already adopted it? Do we need to... If we're going to pause and awards and recognitions, we've adopted the agenda.
No, in my view, there doesn't need to have an adoption of the amendment, given the nature of the comment that was made. It's only temporary until the parties get here.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for checking. So next, we will have public comment. For this meeting, citizens were given the option of submitting their comments online or in person. Comments submitted via the online form were sent to the board prior to the start of tonight's meeting, posted to the board doc site, and will be included in full as an addendum to the meeting minutes. In-person comments will be summarized by the board clerk and included in the official meeting minutes. Documents submitted along with in-person comments will, upon request, be distributed to the board but not included as a part of the board's official minutes. Madam Clerk, would you please announce this evening's in-person speakers?
Madam Chair, we have three speakers this evening. They are Annette Mellett, Justin Jones, and Lindsay Ladner. Each speaker will have four minutes to address the board. There's a timer set up on top of the podium that will turn green when you begin speaking, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your time has expired. As a reminder, no personal belongings other than your cell phone and speaker notes are allowed at the podium. Please have your materials organized in a manner that as you arrive at the podium, you are prepared to start speaking. Please note that comments equivalent to campaigning for any public office are a violation of School Board Policy 1110 and are prohibited. May we have Annette Mellett? Justin Jones?
I'm not really sure how all of this works, so I'll just be really quick with what's on my mind and what I came here for. So I have a niece that I care for with my mother. Our issue is currently with the Department of Transportation, which is kind of aligning with the Chesterfield school system. She continuously gets let off at a bus stop that is not in our neighborhood. This has been something that's brought to the school board's attention. I'm looking at some of these names, and I believe that there may be at least one person that I've spoke to on this matter that referred me to someone else. I was deciding if I wanted to come today, but the incident happened again today where my niece didn't want to get off the bus. We tell her to get off the bus at her correct bus stop, and the bus driver refuses to let her get off the bus at her bus stop. So today, we were sitting around waiting, where's my niece? Where's my niece? Come to find out, she was dropped off again in another subdivision that's not even part of ours. And outside of that, there was an issue that transpired maybe roughly about 30 days ago, where my mom went to go remove my niece from the bus and explained to the bus driver that she's not to be taken out of the neighborhood. This is her bus stop. Whatever happened on the bus, there was some hearsay was that my mom may have accidentally touched the bus driver on her way out of the bus with my niece. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because throughout all of this, she made comments that, well, once we get back, we'll review the footage on the bus. Well, we were wholeheartedly waiting for this footage on the bus to be able to pretty much prove my mom's innocent, that hey, she did not, in fact, assault this woman. Well, come to find out from Chesterfield County Police Department, there was no acting cameras on this bus, which brings another issue of mine and my family. There's, I believe, a lot of money being delegated to the school systems now for safety and security, and for these buses to have camera systems on them that do not accurately work or cannot be used to defend someone, I think is something that should be addressed. You know, one thing that I also would like to say is that in our vicinity, there's an overwhelming number of people that are on the registry. So for my niece to be getting off somewhere that she's not used to getting off of, doesn't know any of the neighbors, it's kind of concerning to us. And like I said, I wasn't going to come this evening until we had to go locate my niece again and figure out why. And this time, she wasn't even let off at the bus stop where she was let off at. The last time, she was let off at a completely different bus stop, and she was walking home. To me, that's a little unacceptable, but I do know things happen. However, we've addressed this with the school board. We've addressed this with the Department of Transportation as well, and it seems to be like some people are handling it and then some people aren't handling it. So what we were told is that her bus stop was, in fact, placed here, and this is where she needs to get off. All the bus drivers will be informed. However, that's not the case. So again, I know this may not be the most severe thing, but I'm trying to prevent something from happening before it happens. You know, we don't want to be in a situation where we say, well, we should have had working cameras, or she should have never got off there in the first place. And that's all I really wanted to bring to you guys' attention this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. May we have Lindsay Ladner? Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's report. Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation is on students from James River High in culinary classes taught by Thomas Sears, learning about community connections as well as cooking basics. As they grow confident in the kitchen, students use their cooking skills to create hearty soups that are then provided to James River High families in need, with extra portions donated to R V A Community Fridges. Enjoy.
Right now, we're teaching nutrition and wellness and intro to culinary arts. It's a fundamentals class, so we do anything from, you know, beginning with recipes, learning how to measure, knife skills, all the basic cooking skills. And so that's a predominant feature of the class. We go into other things. Of course, our foundation that we begin with at the beginning of the year is sanitation. So they all sit for the Serve Safe Food Handbook, so that they are all handling the food safely. So today, we're making soups for our in-house Rapid Relief Program, which supplies food to families at James River in need. But they also do other things. They supply backpacks, school supplies. The soups we made prior to Christmas break, we were able to get them out to about nine families. And now, we're making some cream-based soups for that as well. Anything that's left over from that, we take down to the city for R V A Community Fridges, which supplies food for needy areas within the city where there are food deserts and stuff like that. So it's a mutual aid program.
I took this class because I came from a long line of Cajun cooks, and I wanted to also learn how to cook myself. And I thought, I saw a culinary arts, and I thought, that's probably a perfect way to start. And I've started cooking at home as well. It makes me a bit nervous, like, because if I mess it up, it's not going to be a great meal for a family. But it makes me feel happy that the food that I'm making is going to where it needs to be and not just rotting in a fridge.
So what we're doing with the soups is we'll package them up, and we put them in cord deli containers. And I'll have my nutrition and wellness classes, they're going to be creating labels as part of their learning experience and their work-based learning experience as well. And so they'll create the nutritional labels for them and everything, so that gets put on them. When we keep them in the freezer, so everything's frozen, so it travels well. If someone doesn't have good refrigeration, it at least can last for a little bit longer that way. What I like about the soups is that it can meet everybody's needs for where they are. They can, if they have only a microwave to eat food up in. And you can eat soup cold if you need to, and so it's a nice nutritious meal. And there's also something really heartwarming and warming about eating soup. Well, and that's it. It's like, a lot of times, students don't, it's a problem that they see outside of their existence, and so knowing that they could be sitting next to someone who is in need, that's for food, shelter, and that we're actually making a difference right here at James River for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Murray, and thank you to James River and all of our amazing students that are learning how to cook and also giving back to the community at the same time. Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Hudgens?
That was really great. I loved that they're making soup, and they're learning to cook, they're learning knife skills, they're learning the cleanliness, and they're giving back. That is unbelievable. And the idea, those labels, my gosh, I'd buy that right away. It's great. Really well done. Very cool. Thank you.
Let's see, I think you're up.
And I just want to say, I agree that, what a great example of learning forward while giving back, addressing food insecurity, which is so prevalent in our larger community. Madam Chair, the next presentation this evening is a legislative program update from Sean
Board members, thank you for the chance to update you once again on the legislative session. As you recall, this past week, they had the veto session of the General Assembly. Prior to that, shared with you updates on legislation, also shared with you an update regarding the legislation that was scheduled for amendments or vetoes, as well as all the legislation that was signed. Last week was a fairly active veto session for education pieces. We had about 20 education-related vetoes that were in play. All of those votes were sustained, which meant that the vetoes held in place. A couple highlights, though, from that. The governor did veto the one bill dealing with the sales tax use, which would have been for the 1% that could be designated locally for construction. That was consistent with the governor's actions last year, so it's fairly well anticipated. On amendment perspectives, the great majority of the governor's amendments were, in fact, rejected. And this is more of a process update for this evening. What will happen now is the governor has 30 days from the last Wednesday, so essentially May 2, to the legislation he receives back to either sign that or veto that. So it's unclear at this time what actions the governor will take on the legislation. As that comes into the fold, I'll clearly report that back to you, as well as update the legislative document, which we provided to the board and the community and obviously our schools. Then one other highlight I would note is that on the budget perspective, the governor did put down about 200 amendments on the budget. One of those that was not anticipated was with regards to the support cap, essentially where the governor had redistributed the support cap money to eliminate the support cap for other priorities. That was rejected, so that's certainly something that we're pleased to see that action taken because that investment in the support cap, as you know, has been one of the very top legislative priorities that we've had in Chesterfield schools since pretty much 2008. So we're very hopeful that we'll see its way through with the governor's actions on the budget itself. And as we hear more of that, we will keep you updated. From here, essentially, once we have the actions from the governor at this point in time, we'll update that, update the community as well, update the book. And the two things going forward, obviously, it's preparation already for the 2026 legislative session and our legislative program, and we'll begin that work immediately. The last piece I would note, as I updated you before, is there is a heavy conversation taking place with the legislature with regards to the impacts of some of the cuts that have been taking place in Washington, D.C. Looking primarily right now at the impacts it has on the workforce, those who may be losing their jobs through actions taken in Washington, D.C. The legislature has, on the Senate side and the House side, special committees looking at those, and we're covering those meetings. Right now, the meetings have been very foundational, more from an economical perspective, understanding what impacts Virginia would see in a workforce. The governor's executive leadership right now is focused on that front, making sure that those are impacted, have access to other jobs in Virginia. We've not seen yet conversations with regards to education. That would be a positive point. If it does move in that direction, certainly will keep you updated along the way. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, is there any discussion? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No discussion other than to thank you for the amount of time that you and your team have put together. The spreadsheets, the tabs, the helping break things down for us so that we can understand what's going on, on a more simplified manner, if you will, have been extremely helpful. So just want to thank you for the efforts. I know the public doesn't get to see that and the work that you're doing behind the scenes. We see that, and I greatly appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we have action items.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members, and Dr. Murray. I am Summer Mannish, the Director of Special Education, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Local Special Education Annual Plan for 2526. The I D E A Annual Plan is a federally mandated document, excuse me, governed by the Code of Virginia. This plan is essential for our school division, Chesterfield County Public Schools, to demonstrate eligibility to receive I D E A Part B federal grant funds. The primary purpose of the I D E A Annual Plan is to ensure that children with disabilities receive the rights, services, and protections to which they are entitled. This includes not only students in public schools, but also students with disabilities that are served in our private schools. Before we submit the plan to the Virginia Department of Education, there are several required steps in this process. The plan has been reviewed by the Special Education Advisory Committee, C I A C. The plan has been submitted to and is currently being presented to you, the school board, for your approval. Then the plan must be certified by the Division Superintendent and submitted to the Virginia Department of Education on or before May 9, 2025. Although it was not required, the annual plan was also reviewed by the Chesterfield County Public Schools Instructional Leadership Team on March 10. Our application for I D E A Part B federal funds is projected to provide $14.8 million in federal funding to Chesterfield County during fiscal year 2526. These funds play a critical role in supporting special education services across our school division. The plan is more than just a funding request, however. It does serve as a formal agreement between Chesterfield County Public Schools and the Virginia Department of Education. It outlines exactly how we will intend to use the I D E A grant funds, and once the application is approved, the funds must be used as agreed. Once approved, the annual plan will be in effect from July 1, 2025, through September 30, 2027. The application includes several required components, which ensure that we meet both fiscal and programmatic expectations. These components are outlined on this slide, including the superintendent's certification, the annual plan Part B flow-through application policy statements, statement of assurances, including the General Education Provisions Act survey, information on the special education in local and regional jails, the report on the implementation of the prior year's plan covering 2023-2024 school year, which I'll get to in a few minutes, maintenance of effort, specific data related to comprehensive coordinated early intervening services, coordinated early intervening services, and the preliminary proportionate set aside amounts for students served with an I S P. And finally, the application for the proposed use of the federal grant funds for Section 611 and 619. Before we dive deeper into the I D E A Annual Plan, I wanted to take a moment to share the structure of our special education department. The special education department leadership team, along with our staff across both central office and our schools, work collaboratively to ensure that students with disabilities receive high-quality individualized supports in all of the areas outlined on this slide. These supports are grounded in best practice, aligned with legal requirements, and are tailored to meet the unique needs of every learner in Chesterfield County Public Schools who's been identified with a disability. This plot shows the count of our students with disabilities and is meant to provide an overall context for showing the increase of our students with disabilities population over the past several years. We expect this trend of increased students requiring special education services to continue. Section 611 funding is specifically allocated for supporting special education services for students age 3 to 21, and is a critical part of ensuring that we can provide high-quality tailored supports to students with disabilities across our school system. A significant portion of Section 611 funds were allocated to special education full-time equivalents, or F T Es, to staff positions across our schools, as well as funding for temporary work assignments. These temporary positions support various initiatives, both during the school year and over the summer months. We've also invested in the repair and building of assistive technology equipment and other required inventory items to ensure that students have the tools they need for success in the classroom, helping to create more accessible and inclusive learning environments. We've also used a portion of the funding for software and licensing, as well as test protocols and kits, which are used for evaluating and assessing our students. These tools help our teams make data-driven decisions and ensure that each student's needs are properly identified and addressed. Finally, some of the funding we used for materials and training in literacy and math. This ensures that our students, who are teachers who are serving our students with disabilities, continue to have the resources and professional development that they need in order to ensure our students with disabilities are receiving the instruction that they require. in order to ensure our students with disabilities are receiving the instruction that they require and making progress on their goals. Section 619 fund plays a vital role in ensuring that our youngest learners, those with disabilities that are ages 2 through 5, receive the supports that they need during this critical age of early childhood development. Through funding for specialized staff, contracted services, and essential materials, we're able to meet the needs of our youngest learners. This chart outlines the prior year's plan funding as it flowed through Chesterfield County Public Schools. So we received a preliminary proportionate set-aside amount from the state of Virginia, and then we had a total proposed budget, which was included in the previous year's plan. We then received a total award amount from the Virginia Department of Education, and then our verified proportionate set-aside amounts are also outlined here for you. The proposed annual plan for 2526, you will note, is very similar to the prior year's plan. There continues to be funding for special education full-time equivalents to staff essential positions across our schools and school division, as well as funding for temporary work assignments. We propose to continue to use funds for the repair and building of our assistive technology and the purchase of necessary inventoried items for students. This would include adaptive equipment and tools to create inclusive learning environments. Additionally, Section 611 will continue to fund software and licensing, as well as test protocols and kits, to aid in evaluating and assessing our students' needs. Finally, investments in literacy and math materials and training will be expanded to include evidence-based instructional resources to provide students with disabilities specifically designed instruction in executive functioning skills and behavior strategies. Similar to the prior year's plan for Section 619, we also propose to continue to fund specialized staff, contracted services, and essential materials for our early childhood special education program. This chart indicates the total proposed budget based on information that we received from the Virginia Department of Education, as well as our preliminary proportionate set-aside at this time. So before you this evening is memorandum 55-25, the 2025-2026 Special Education Annual Plan Part B Flow-Through Application. It is recommended that CCPS approve the 2526 Local Special Education Annual Plan in accordance with the memo.
Thank you, Ms. Manos.
You're welcome.
Board members, may I have a motion to approve memo number 055-25 as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, is there any discussion? There, oh, sorry, Mr. Pronto.
That's okay, Madam Chair. Ms. Manos, thank you so much for your leadership in special education. For those that don't know, you started with us at the beginning of the school year, and you have played catch-up ever since.
October 1, yes.
Yes, that's correct, October 1. So even shorter distance there. And not only being on the SEAC committee, but just as a parent of a child at special education, one of my main concerns was the direction that we're heading in as a CCPS in general with special education. And from just a little bit that I've gotten to know you and work alongside of you, I can say that we are headed in the right direction. So I want to thank you for your leadership, for playing catch-up as fast as you can, and also a special thanks to SEAC Committee for working in partnership to present this to the board today. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I couldn't agree more. I'm very appreciative for all of you and for SEAC as well, and I just couldn't be more honored to be back in Chesterfield County Public Schools, serving our students and our staff members in this capacity. Thank you.
There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The memo is approved. Thank you, Ms. Manos. Next, we have memo number 056-25 from Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, Board members, staff recommends revisions to a current policy, revisions to Policy 7020, sale of food items on school premises. This policy is proposed to be updated reflect provision that vending machines on school property, both inside and outside of school buildings, must be operated under authority and direction of Food Nutrition Services. This includes arrangements with third-party vendors, provided all operations comply with any associated regulations. School policy 1200 provides that, quote, "If circumstances warrant immediate action on proposed policy or regulation, the school may suspend its rules or bring the policy up or regulation up for immediate adoption following the first reading," end quote. Therefore, it's recommended the school board suspend its regular rules of policy adoption by waiving a second reading of the policy contained in this memorandum and approve following this first reading. Proposed changes have been reviewed by the school board attorney. If approved, this revision will become effective immediately. Madam Chair, you have two proposed recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, may I have a motion for the board to suspend its rules and waive second reading?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, is there any discussion? There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. Board members, may I have a motion to adopt the policies to become effective immediately?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, is there any discussion? There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Cooker?
Aye. The motion carries. We are now going to move back to recognitions for today, so we, actually, Mr. Smith, you're up for awards and recognition. Go ahead and continue.
Thank you, Board, for moving around the agenda items, and I think we've gotten a great majority of folks here this evening. For some reason, they're not here, we'll find a way to make sure that we recognize their achievements in an appropriate manner. First up, if I could ask our Presidential Scholars nominees to come forward at this time? Five of Virginia's nominees for the 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program are Chesterfield County students. The program was established in 1964 to celebrate graduating seniors who demonstrate outstanding scholarship, leadership, and dedication to their education. Abigail Abram from Cosby High, Colson Caffel of Malothean High, Jean-Jean Joe of Clorhill High, Brendan Schremler of Maggie L. Walker Governor's School, Reece Wu of the Maggie L. Walker Governor's School. Nominated students submit a detailed application to the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, which in May will select up to 161 students nationwide as Presidential Scholars. Being named a Presidential Scholar is one of America's highest honors for high school students. Please join me congratulating these students.
Congratulations, you guys. It is one of America's, the highest honors. Of 4,000 of you guys out of, I think it's, I wrote it down, 3.6 million high school seniors, 4,000. That's incredible. Well done. You guys make us proud, and we are so thankful that, you know, you are doing great, and good luck on, you know, you never know. You might be, you might be, make it past the next round. So do you guys have anything to say? Would you like to say a little something about the honor?
Yes, no? Yes, okay, great.
So I'd like to thank my family and friends and like the support of my school for like my education journey to get me to this point.
Very nice. That's awesome. Thanks.
I'd also obviously like to thank my family, my mom and dad, my little brother. I'd also like to thank my dual light teacher, Dr. V. She's the best. She helped me edit. She helped me write, and I'm pretty sure she was the one that probably recommended me. So thanks, Dr. V.
Well, thanks, guys. Congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause. Congrats, guys.
Next up, if I could ask our Monakin High girls swim and dive team to come forward? Congratulations to the Monakin High girls and swim and dive team for winning their fourth VHSL state championship in a row. Since first hitting the pool eight years ago, the Monakin Girls have dominated VHSL Class 4 competition, winning six of the past seven state titles. Consider these accomplishments. Monakin swimmers broke three state records this year. Monakin now holds four of the 11 all-time Class 4 state records. Two swimmers won All-American honors for being among the 100 fastest times in the country. Monakin's 200-yard medley relay team broke the state record for the third consecutive year and earned All-American honors. The team has won this event for the past four years. And Monakin High's 400-yard freestyle relay team broke the state record and won All-American honors. Please join me congratulating the team, the coaches.
Go Chiefs. This is amazing. I said last year when we, you know, we recognize you all that we should just have a standing date on the calendar because it's getting to be pretty regular. We're so proud of you. We're proud of the effort and the work that you put into the sport that you love, and we're proud of you as peer leaders in your, in your school. And I'm going to pass the mic, and I want to hear, I know we usually ask, like, what's your, what's your stroke? Like, what's your greatest accomplishment? What are you most proud of in this? Or just, you know, your favorite ice cream. No pressure. But yeah, I mean, just like, what was like your highlight?
This was my first year coaching at Monakin. I really enjoyed working with the whole team. Most impactful memory over the season, the season was at states, the four, the last, very last event, the 400 free relay. Just, it was a very close meet, so it was important to me to see that we grinded it out.
It was also my first year coaching, first year teaching at Monakin, too, so it was really an exciting opportunity to get involved with the school on like an athletic capacity as well as an academic capacity. And so my most impactful moment was getting to see kids that I teach and that I work with at school also succeeding in the pool.
I'm the head coach over at Monakin, and we've been a team, as I said, for eight years now. Before we started as a VHSL team, we were a club team for two years, and I've been here from the very beginning. So it's been a, it's been a really special group of seniors that we have graduating this year. This is going to go down as probably the winningest class in Monakin sports history. And it was another really close meet this year. They, they're all pretty close, but super proud of the way that the kids all came together and competed as one team.
Okay. My favorite part of the season was probably the relays. I think they were all really fun, low stress, and we all had like a good time as a group, try, try to win. So, yeah.
I'm a senior, and me and one of my other senior teammates have been on the state team for all four years. So I just think being able to grow and watch this team grow over the past four years has been really special for me.
I'm a sophomore, and I really enjoy like all the new friends I've made on the swim team. It's my first year on state, so I'm really proud of that. It's my greatest accomplishment. So.
Congratulations again, and I hope you all get to enjoy that sixth ring. Is it the? So thanks again. Congratulations.
Next up, we have recognition for our awards from the School Nutrition Association of Virginia. If I could ask Tracy Llewellyn, Ronnie Lapel, Dr. Lisa Hill, and our friends at Reams Road Elementary to come forward at this time. Chesterfield County Public Schools won top recognition from the School Nutrition Association of Virginia during a March conference. Congratulations to these honorees. Tracy Llewellyn, Cafeteria Manager at Byrd High, was named Manager of the Year. She transformed the school system's busiest cafeteria, serving 1,700 meals each day into a positive and supportive space for students and employees. Ronnie Lapel, Food and Nutrition Services Marketing Specialist, was named Administrator of the Year. Ronnie is passionate about recognizing employees, schools, and programs making a difference in student nutrition. Dr. Lisa Hill, Principal of Hopkins Elementary, was named Friend of the School Nutrition Association of Virginia. She helps students and families understand the importance of good nutrition and school meals. And Reams Road Elementary won the Marketing Award for a Pirate-themed approach to National School Lunch Week. Cafeteria Manager Heather Patterson and her team embraced the national theme "School Lunch Pirates, Find Your Treasure" with decorations, student coloring pages, photo booths, and more to amp up interest in school lunches. Please join me congratulating these administrators.
So it's not often that we get to get the administrators up here to recognize them for their contributions to food service, and I know some of your managers are grateful for the help because it takes the tribe to do what we do, and I'm just grateful that all of you just dug in and they saw your work, and you're being acknowledged for your work because it's really important, because hungry children don't learn, right? So whatever we're doing to get them to eat and feed them, which could be their only meal for the day for some of our children, I appreciate the work that you're doing and how seriously you take it, and it's not going unseen. So do you want to share the best part about what you're doing?
The best part what I'm doing is making sure all of our kids have a complete breakfast lunch and a dinner snack program at Byrd High School. It has been an honor to be there for this past year. I thank my supervisor, Anne Berkeley, and Casey for giving me the opportunity to go to Byrd and fulfill what we need to do with my staff and everything there to help the children get a better education with the food and nutrition that we supply for them. Thank you all.
Hello. First of all, thank you for the recognition this evening, and I love my job, and I'm so grateful to be able to work on different programs that will allow us to highlight our, our school district and our department. And I work with great people to make a difference, professionals, and the team just, you know, is wonderful. So thank you.
Hello. It is my pleasure to make sure that our students are eating healthy lunches and breakfast, and like Ms. Chatters said many times, it is the meal that they get that sustains them, the breakfast and lunch that they have. So thank you to the division for making sure that our students are fed, and thank Ronnie. She's very good at recognizing all of us and taking lots of pictures. Thank you.
Let's give them a hand, please.
If I could ask Jenica Dagman to come forward at this time? Congratulations to Jenica Dagman for being named Hero of the Year by Connor's Hero Foundation for her work with children being treated for cancer. The Crenshaw Elementary School art teacher has volunteered more than a decade making art with pediatric cancer patients and their siblings during monthly sessions at the Visual Arts Center. Collaborative artworks created in these sessions are auctioned to raise thousands of dollars for Connor's Hero Foundation to the Annual Heroes Arts Ball. Please join me congratulating Jenica.
Congratulations. I want to hear more about this story behind your 10 years that you've been focused on this project. So can you share a little bit more about it? Thank you.
So I was approached in one of my first years teaching at Crenshaw by another teacher who asked if I would like to do art projects with pediatric cancer patients and their siblings, and I did, and I have been doing it since then. It's been really close to my heart to help these kids. We have a great time at the art sessions, and then the artwork is sold each May at a live auction. And it's a black tie event. It's very fun, and all the proceeds go back to the organization. I was diagnosed myself in 2020 with breast cancer at a young age, and it has taken on an even bigger meaning because I understand what these kids have been going through. So it's been a huge honor that they are recognizing me this way in May, and I just look them And I just look them up online, connersheroes.org. They help local children with their cancer journey.
Thanks so much for sharing that with us and thanks for all you do for our community and bringing that in, that community service to our kids in this classroom too. Thank you. Let's hear it one more time.
If I could ask our friends from PTC and St. Mark's United Methodist Church to come forward this time? Public education is the foundation of American democracy and the work of Chesterfield County Public Schools' teachers and staff members demonstrates the transformative and uplifting power of education in our community. Tonight, we recognize PTC and the St. Mark's United Methodist Churches. PTC is a nonprofit organization and Virginia's IDA, Special Education Law, funded partners, partner, sorry, funded parents center. PTC is dedicated to empowering families of students with disabilities, the students themselves, and the professionals who support them. Through training, resources, and collaboration, PTC is an essential partner in strengthening family engagement and ensuring students with disabilities receive the support they need to thrive. St. Mark's United Methodist Church has a strong partnership with the school system's McKinney-Vento Office to support students who experience homelessness. St. Mark's helps Chesterfield County Public Schools' families who face housing and financial hardships receive essential resources such as food, clothing, and housing. Please join me congratulating and thanking these two important partners.
There's a saying that it takes a village to raise a child, right? And so we greatly appreciate your contributions and what you're doing for our kids in Chesterfield County Public Schools. I know from the SEAC Committee that the PTC has a little red book to help parents understand special education and their rights and resources or whatnot. And we're passing them out practically every meeting for, for parents to understand and get the support that they need and help. And also for, you know, that in and of itself for our special education kids is important. But we also have other kids who are struggling in life, not because of anything that they did, right? So they're needing some extra help and to have the church pull up alongside the school and say, how can we help? What clothes can we provide? What meals can we provide? That is invaluable. And we would not be able to progress as far as we have been able to get to as a school division if it was not for folks like yourselves, the organizations and the churches that you represent, to pull up alongside of us. Not to boast your chest out, right? But, but to partner with us, to be able to instill in these kids in their lives and what's to come. So on behalf of the school board, thank you so much for what you do for our kids. And just a few words, if you don't mind, in regards to your passion behind what it is that you do, you know, whether it's special education, whether it's McKinney-Vento, there has to be a drive there somewhere and we'd just love to learn a little bit more about that.
Hi, I'm Cassie from PTC. And our big mission, like he said, was to educate parents, professionals, and students. And I come from an education background as a teacher, so it's very important to me that the parents are educated so they understand what is being put in front of them.
Hi, I'm Joe Sikora from St. Mark's, relatively new member there. But I was brought aboard into this STO, Service to Others Committee. And one of the slogans is "St. Mark's Has Left the Building." So we found out just how far Harrow Gate is from St. Mark's. It's a big county. And I'll let the rest of our team explain what we do there.
My name is Ann Boyle and I'm a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church. And first of all, I'd like to thank, thank you all for the recognition and we appreciate that. I guess my passion is just to really to help people, to especially homeless children and families. And it's a passion that we have developed in, in our church. And I think we try to be the hands and feet of Jesus. That's what we are hoping that we can be. And I just would like to thank you all, thank the people here, and especially this group around me, the people I work with. It's a great team. Everyone's committed to, to serving and we get more out of it, I think, than we give perhaps. And I'm just appreciative of the opportunity to serve. So thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jane Davis, also with St. Mark's. I guess I would say, we surveyed the congregation several years ago to see what their interest was in terms of missions. And the two things that stood out was working with education and working with homeless and food insecurity and things like that. And then when we found McKinney-Vento, you know, that, that whole program, it just seemed like the perfect match to work with homeless students. So that's what we've been doing for the last couple of years. And having Yasmin able to help us and guide us and give us specific things that we're not having to search them out. She tells us some things that are real needs, has been phenomenal, so.
I'm Justin White. I'm the lead pastor at St. Mark's. And yes, I just want to thank the board, but also thank the McKinney-Vento staff. Working with them and the CCPS staff has been fantastic as we kind of help identify needs and where we can meet them. So thank you all.
Sure. My name is Yasmin Acevedo and I'm the McKinney-Vento Specialist. This is my third year in this position. And I just want to say thank you guys. This, I'm the most proud of this partnership with you guys and I'm so grateful for, for all the support that you've given me and our families.
Again, thank you for your partnership with us. We greatly appreciate you all and thank you for coming out this evening.
Next, we have recognition of outstanding driver performance, Dr. Fry.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Roberts, it's my pleasure this evening to present to you our Drivers of the Month. There are many bus drivers who could be recognized this month, but each transportation area manager had to make the tough decision of selecting a single driver who exemplified excellence and dedication to represent their area. We'd like to recognize and honor the following drivers. Riley McDonough, Area 1, Bus 6, three months of service. Riley's area office says Riley has been an absolute rock star by always stepping up to take an extra route, field trips, while keeping a positive can-do attitude that lifts up the whole team. Raven Patterson, Area 2, Bus 580, nine months of service. Accepting the award for Raven is Pam Jeffre, the Area 2 Manager. Raven says, "I enjoy being a bus driver because I love actually being there for the children. A lot of kids need me and it's important for me to be there for them." Kevin Mentor, Area 3, Bus 581, one year of service. Accepting the award for Kevin is Jaclyn Roach, the Area 3 Manager. Kevin enjoys driving the students and says his job is all about getting the students to school and home safely. Kevin's area manager says he has become a great asset to the Team Transportation and is always willing to help cover routes on a moment's notice and is a very much a team player. Susan Payne, Area 4, Bus 776, eight years of service. Susan is a key member of Team Transportation. She is always looking for ways to improve efficiency and morale and she is a champion of our Express Card program. All of her elementary students have their cards and she can load her bus within two minutes at school, which I believe is a record. Susan has a great relationship with her fellow drivers, office staff, school staff, parents, and students. Susan is also a very active member in my Drivers Council. Kevin Austin, Area 5, Bus 333, eight months of service. Kevin states, "I like being able to help my students start their day with a smile." And the Area 5 staff say they really appreciate him.
So I appreciate bus drivers, I think, more than anybody because I got four kids that have to get on the bus. And then I have to get to work after they get on the bus. So I appreciate the timeliness. And on rainy days, on cold days, my bus driver waits because she knows that they're sitting in the car, trying to get out, grabbing book bags. You guys are really cognizant of what's going on. And then you guys are like crisis management on the bus while you're driving. So that's a skill set that I don't have when I'm riding with my kids. But you guys do it in love and they respect you guys, right? Like, my bus driver said I couldn't do that. Okay, well, let me get permission from your bus driver because you're not listening to mommy, it's always the bus driver, or the teacher, or the principal, everybody but mommy. So teach us your ways so that we can have that kind of control in a car. I heard what you, what was said about each of you and that's amazing. Does anybody want to share something additional about why you like driving?
I just really like that I see my students every morning when they're having a bad day, they look at me and I tell them, "Good morning, good afternoon." By name, I know every one of them and I know what they're going through because they talk with me, talk with my aides on my bus, so.
I guess I just want to say I love my students. I'm very fortunate to have great kids and I love the people that I work with. Great bus drivers.
Well, again, Kevin Mentor, he has become a great asset to not only transportation, but he's a great representative of CCPS as a whole. He came in a couple of months ago and he said, "I'm ready." He said, "Put me out there, I'm here, do whatever you need." And when a driver comes in and says that, that's, that's like precious metals to us. So, yeah, he's, he's just become a, just a really good bus driver and I'm glad that I have him in Area 3.
Raven is similar in Area 2. She does a great job. She jumps in and helps us to do whatever we need to do. But funny story about her, she was, she was delayed on her second run and she wasn't going to make it to her third and she called us and she's like, "My kids need me. My kids need me to be there. Are you sure?" I was like, "Well, we have someone who can get there earlier than you, Raven." And she was like, "But I think they need me." But we got the kids picked up earlier. I said, "We'll get you back there tomorrow." But she's great. She's really good.
Yeah, no, I started just a few months ago, but I absolutely enjoy it. The kids are great. You know, you spend as much time as you can on the bus, but it's honestly amazing. I can't complain.
Let's give them another hand. Thank you.
Next, we have recognition of outstanding food service employees from Mr. Dunbrecht.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Murray, Mr. Roberts. Thank you as always for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding Food and Nutrition Services team members. With the utmost bias, I believe we have 457 of the most dedicated individuals in Chesterfield County working in our school cafeterias. Working in a kitchen isn't easy anywhere and school cafeterias present their own unique challenges. While we have employees that have been with us for decades, we also recognize that the environment may not be for everyone, which necessitates a steady recruitment on our part. This week, we hosted our most recent new employee orientation where our new team members have the opportunity to come in and learn about our division and our operations as a whole. I have to admit, the Monday after spring break can be tough for everyone, but I was immediately refreshed when I walked into the meeting and I got to see the excitement on 12 new employees' faces as we expressed to them the difference that they can make in a student's day, every single day, by providing them a lunch. I'm incredibly thankful to our team for the constant reminders of how fortunate we are to serve our community. We have five honorees this evening. I do not believe two are with us. First, who is not with us this evening is Verly Lewis. Ms. Lewis is a food service associate at Manchester Middle School and has been with the county for one year. She says, "I was very reluctant to start a different journey after being in the medical field for over 40 years, but this has been a good move for me and I enjoy what I do. We have a great team and a great leadership and a positive environment. The students are our future and I'm glad to be a part of the team." Also unable to join us this evening is Thelma Bykey. Ms. Bykey is a food service associate at Byrd High School and she's been with us for 11 years. She says, "I'm thankful that I can still be helpful in providing nutritious meals for the students. It's a learning experience and we learn something new every day." Next, we have Pinkle Patel. Ms. Patel is a food service associate at Enon Elementary School. She's been with us for one year. She says, "It's fun to work with the little kids every day." Thank you so much to my supervisor, Mr. Jerome, and my manager, Ms. Kim, for this opportunity. Next, we have Debbie Osterbein. Ms. Osterbein was our longtime cafeteria manager at Matoka Middle School, but has spent the past school year assisting our department with management coverage all over the county. She's been with the county for 27 years and she is currently completing her SRP year. She says, "I love my job. I've met some great people along the way. I've watched the children grow up and I still see some of them from time to time. I once had a student tell me, 'Don't count the days, make the day count. One positive thought in the morning can change your whole day and attitude.'" Finally, we have Lois Pollard. Ms. Pollard is a food service associate at Cloverhill Elementary School. She's been with the county for 40 years. She says, "I would like for everyone to know I enjoy working alongside a great team of women and love doing their part in feeding the kids, just like I do."
Can we please give them a round of applause? I want to, Berkeley, I want to make sure I heard that, forty?
Four zero.
Four zero. Forty, 27?
Two years.
Two years? Gotcha. I got you. Look what you have to look forward to, right? A long career with us and we hope you do. Well, first of all, thank you. Forty years, 27 years, and even two years. What an impact you make every day. But I'm telling you all something you already know, right? As much as the kids might have an impact on you, what they see every day has an impact on them. And it's the way you're presenting, it's the way, it's the cleanliness of the, of the cafeteria, it's the quality of the food, right? You know these things, right? And sometimes it's hard to get other people to understand that, but you don't have to explain that to our kids because they're looking forward to it. If you knew my son, and he's nine, and I ask him at the end of the day, "Hey, what's your favorite part of the day?" You want to guess what his answer is? Lunch. It's lunch. And a part of it is the food and it's the friendship, right? But he feels welcome. And our kids feel welcome because of what you're doing day in and day out. And so on behalf of the school board, thank you so much for your dedication and years of service to Chesterfield County Public Schools, but more importantly, to our kids. So with that being said, would love for you, to give you the opportunity, if you'd like, just to share a little something about why you enjoy what you do, or a funny story, or anything along those lines.
I love coming to school, working with the ladies that I have. They're just like family to me.
And I'd like to say that, you know, I've watched a lot of y'all's children grow up if they've come through my school. And I'm sure you've, some of y'all may be some of hers. But I love my job and I am going to miss it, but I'm looking forward to my new chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. I love my job to all little things. And my daughter always tell to her lunch lady, "My mom was a lunch lady." Yeah, so she's proud, is, she's proud very much. Thank you.
Thank you all so very much. Thank you for coming out.
So next, we have items for board review. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items for this evening?
Madam Chair, tonight's agenda includes the following items for board review. Number one, Magisterial District Improvement Funds FY 2020-25. Number two, FY 2020-25, February expenditures versus appropriations. Number three, budget change request summary across categories, February 2020-25. Number four- Number four, board committee reports. And number five, pre-K update, February 2020-25.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent remarks, Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say I think we should give strong consideration of mixing our meetings up in that fashion because what a way to end a meeting with such positivity. So well done to everybody that we were delighted to recognize this evening. I do have several updates and acknowledgements. First, I want to say that this is graduation season, not just for our students, but for a lot of our adult, infinite learners. So to celebrate some of our principals who embody that spirit each and every day, I just want to give a special shout out to Dr. Ariann Hayes at Midlothian Middle School, Dr. Robin Riley, Principal at Weaver, Dr. Leslie Harris at CECL, and our soon-to-be Monika and Principal, who we acknowledged earlier this evening, Dr. Benjamin Schindler. Second is an update on weapons detection. Please to report that we have made it out of the procurement phase. So I will be sharing a recommended action at next month's board meeting, which will give us the appropriate amount of time to sew up any loose ends on funding sources and then I will share that action recommendation for your review and decision. The next two are student-based and that is to celebrate the annual plant sale that will occur this Saturday at CTC at Courthouse. This is particularly special because, for those unaware, this winter, which was a brutal one for several reasons, burst a pipe in our greenhouse and many of the plants that support this plant sale were lost. But it also showed what silver lining can appear through those dark clouds. Many of our community partners, a lot of them unsolicited, reached out to contribute, whether financially or other nurseries donating what they could so that our kids could continue to learn, grow, literally and metaphorically, and then help us realize this plant sale. All that said, supply will be a little more limited this year, so I encourage the teacher to raise the prices, supply and demand, I think there's a lesson there. But get there early, Saturday, 8 to 4, and then for employees, Friday, 10 to 2. On Monday, our Meadowbrook Academy for Developing Entrepreneurous will have their evening sale. So what an opportunity to come out and support our future business leaders. We mentioned this the other meeting where they tried to sell me hair products. Maybe I'll take my kids along this time. But that will kind of compete with our all-county awards on Monday. I'll give you a pass, Ms. Chatters, if I don't see you, I'll know where you are, supporting a great, great cause. Couple of VDOE updates. Sean, or Mr. Smith, made reference earlier to a lot of General Assembly action. The support cap amendment that the governor put forward cut what we were expecting by two-thirds. That's significant, around $7 million of anticipated funding. So we are encouraged that the House has sent it back without any type of acceptance of that red line. So we remain confident that that will be seen through and we will realize the full measure of the removal of the support cap. Also VDOE-related, I just feel it appropriate to make you all aware, but also our public, that we have heard rumblings that the new equating for our SOL scoring may take some extra time this year, perhaps up until the end of May. Largely problematic for school divisions such as ours that end at the end of May, when you consider things like expedited retakes and how that influences our academic achievement narrative. Shared my concerns with a DOE rep today, as well, another superintendent who represents Region 1 will be sharing concerns at the SSLC meeting with the state in the next few days. So I just wanted to make you aware that we are advocating for that, but I wanted to make you aware that that may be something very real and unfortunate this year. On that note, I want to encourage our staff and students, as we kind of push in on this final little less than two months of school, it is important for everybody, not just to show up, but to be present. Attendance matters, adult and child. Kind of wild to think that a month and a half we'll be doing our graduation parades, so exciting times. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was fully aware of how staffing at our schools work. Because getting hired for a position is exciting. Being informed that the numbers don't support you remaining at a particular site is an uncomfortable conversation, but also can present uncomfortable emotions for the employee that is impacted. And this can impact any position, clerical, administrative, certainly teachers, as we've seen, but also counseling positions. And there's been some advocacy for increasing or maintaining certain counseling positions. And I just want to be clear that every school is staffed under or at the SOQ expectations. So our enrollment and SOQs most largely determine how staffing is assigned at our buildings. And yes, sometimes that does present uncomfortable conversations or realities. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Next, we have announcements, communications, and school board comments. School board members, are there any announcements or comments this evening? The school board will hold a work session on Tuesday, May 13, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. here in the public meeting room. It will be followed by a business meeting at 6:30 p.m. If there's no further business, we need a motion to adjourn.
We make a motion to adjourn.
Madam Clerk, would you please call, roll on the motion.
Todd Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Steven Pronta.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Cooker.
Aye. The motion carries. The April 8, 2025 school board business meeting is adjourned.